Sharon?
Here.
Dr. Bridges here.
Mr. Jester.
Here.
Ms. Claude Felter here. Ms. John.
Here.
Colonel Curtis.
Here.
Recognitions, fortunately.
Yes, today, um, McCants, you guys already mentioned, we're gonna have, is our International Leo of the Year, and in order to help explain that, we have the District Governor and the Lions Club, and I don't know the order, but Lions just take over.[99.02][99.02](laughter)
Well, I don't know the order either, but thank you. I am Robert Phillips, and I'm one of the advisors for the Lawton Leo Club, and I'd like to take just a couple minutes to talk about our club and then the process for the nomination. Uh, our Leo Club was established in February of 2015. Uh, they follow along the same guidelines as our Lions Club. They elect their own officers, they, uh, follow the same, uh, procedures, they decide what they do, who they support, who they don't support. So this is a group of 12 to 18-year-olds that, uh, are in the community involved with multiple activities going on. Uh, some of the things that they've done since they've been established is they have, uh, adopted Liberty Lake. They go out on a quarterly basis and clean around the lake. They have also, uh, joined in with City of Lawton Adopt a Stream Program. If you go by the Olive Garden, you'll see a little sign there. Adopt a Stream, Lawton Leo Club. So they go out there and clean that, uh, clean that stream up. They've been involved in multiple programs in the Lawton community. They established a recycle program with the Lawton Armed Services YMCA. In the last 21 months, and I think this is very important, in the last 21 months, they have attended two state conventions, one in Tulsa, one here in Lawton. Two district conventions, uh, visited the Medals of Hope, which is the, uh, foster program up near Perkins. Uh, they are registered for the multi-district, uh, convention in February in Ardmore, where Leo McKenzie will be recognized by our International Director, and we feel that's kind of important because it is the first time in history that a sitting... So we are very, very proud of that fact. Uh, they're also scheduled to attend the International Convention in Chicago in 2007, which will be a first for them as well. Uh, a little bit about what took place in the nomination. There's a nomination packet, and that packet asks five questions. And I would like to go over, uh, Leo McKenzie's packet with you just real quickly. Uh, that packet is put together, is sent to Chicago. The International Directors meet in Chicago in June-July timeframe, and then they select their, or they make their selections. This year, they selected 37 Leos worldwide, uh, 17 in the United States, and one in Oklahoma. And we are extremely proud of that last fact. Uh, Leo McKenzie was the only Leo in Oklahoma that was selected this year. So here are the questions they ask. How did this Leo demonstrate leadership skills? List examples. Uh, this is what Leo McKenzie does on the leadership side. From 2000, uh, February 2015 till the day this award, well, this nomination was put in, she held the office as Club Treasurer, setting up, maintaining an Excel spreadsheet for the Leo Club. She participated in all the club activities. She made recommendations for service projects, and in addition to the Leo Club, she was a member of the Student Council, where she was a Treasurer. She was Activities Director Assistant, National Junior Honor Society Historian, Student Council Arts Coordinator, and she is currently our President of the Leo Club. The second question. How did the Leo show a superior record in implementing successful Leo service projects? Again, she recommended, participated in two fundraising events and raised approximately $1,500 for the club. She researched, developed two poster boards explaining the Leo program, which was displayed at one state convention and two district conventions, which she also attended. The level of organization was medium to difficult. Uh, during her tenure, funds were distributed to one disabled veteran family, and this is also very important because this one check prevented this veteran's family from being evicted. It allowed that family, uh, the veteran, to accept a job at, uh, Home Depot, and she is still employed there. So that one act alone kept a family from being evicted and kept an individual from losing their job. Uh, she was involved in a Lawton Lions Club Street project. Uh, the Leo Club donated to that, so as you drive into Lawton and you see the Lawton Lions Club Street sign, uh, she had a direct impact on making that happen. Uh, in addition, she helped last Thanksgiving donating, uh, food baskets for young soldiers through the RMC, uh, through the Armed Services YMCA, and she did that on Fort Sill. The third question. How did the Leo make contributions to the development and growth of the Leo Club? And what Leo McKenzie did was she recruited two members to the club, and they're still active. Uh, she appeared a couple of times, uh, for service projects and was particularly, uh, well, she was noted in the newspaper and on KSWO. Uh, she's got a lot of press coverage in the last year. And this, uh, this resulted in the club receiving recognition from multiple media outlets. Uh, I hope I'm not going too long, but two more. Number four. How did, how did the Leo demonstrate distinct achievements in community or school activities outside the Leo Club? Uh, Leo McKenzie, uh, participated in the following activities which had a direct impact on the local community. She worked with the Oklahoma Blood Institute. Uh, she was just recognized last week as the Youth Volunteer of the Year at that organization. Uh, additionally, she volunteered with the United Way. I don't see how she has time to go to school.[468.25][468.25](laughter) Uh, she participated in SWAT, S-W-A-T. Uh, I could go on and on and on, but I know we're limited on time. So lastly, how did the Leo demonstrate high ethical standards and personal integrity? Well, in addition to what I've talked about, here are just some of the things that, that she has done. She has been a cheerleader for four years. She's been a PTSA volunteer for six years. She's 16-years-old. She's been a United Way volunteer for six years. She's been a SWAT member for one year. She's been a volunteer with Oklahoma Blood Institute for two years. She received a Presidential Educational Award in the eighth grade. She replaced, she received the first place in Poetry Motion in the eighth grade. And she received the Oklahoma State Regents for Higher Education Certificate of Outstanding Academic Performance in English. She lettered in academics, received two gold bars and two cheer bars. Oh, and did I mention she's also had, she's had a job since she's been... How old? Working at the race pack?[537.41][537.41](laughter) A long time. So, uh, again, I don't know how she does it. Uh, bottom line is, uh, Leo McKenzie is a absolute wonder to work with. Uh, we thoroughly enjoy her. She's our President. Uh, it's unfortunate you can only nominate these Leos once. Otherwise, she would be nominated again, again, and again. And, uh, I can speak for the record, you will hear the name Leo McKenzie Love many, many times in the future because whatever she sets out to do, she's gonna do, and then she's gonna add to it. So with that, I would like to give you Leo McKenzie Love.[579.87][579.87](applause)
I just wanna say thank you for being nominated for this award. It was a great honor. And being in Leos has impacted me by making me more involved in my community. And I just love doing the service projects, which have a great effect on the community. And Leos has been a great impact on me.[611.75][611.75](applause)
Again, if you need to step out, you are free to go. I think we have another...
We gotta take...
Yep, they got another event. Another award. Thank y'all. And we don't have a text report.
Yes, we go to Item Six, Departmental Report. For Departmental Report tonight, we have an update from the EIA, which is also the LEAD program with, and Ms. Brenda Hatch, and, um, for our official committee...
Give us an update. These are going.
Great. Well, thank you for just coming to give an update on our LEAD initiative. Somebody asked us what is LEAD. It sure is hard to sat down one or two minutes and get what we call Vader Speech, and then before you, and try to explain. And we've had newspapers to explain it, but to not sit in view is a D. Uh, Tiffany Verska, thank heavens, took them to follow Carol and I to the nine LEAD schools, and she filmed us doing operation meetings, grading operation feedback, doing a meeting, just of everything. Plus, she was there in the time that our consultants were here from the University of Virginia. She had to just interview, uh, the consultants and some footage of our meeting with the district as well. And so I thank her for the many hours put into that. Hopefully, after watching that, we'll even paint a picture for it. It'll be aired on LPS, uh, T-Station, and so people will be able to understand LEAD initiative and, um, the fact that it's making our schools. You know, we've added four more schools here and called Cohort 13, and Carol McPhail is their chef. So with this, Carol wants to come forward and bring a bit on the progress that Cohort 13 has made thus far.
And Mrs. Hatch, it is my honor to work with Hatch, who is to be recognized as the Shepherd for Cohort 13. I would like to extend a special thank to Dr. Din, Dr. Polk, the Schumay team, and you, the school board, for your support in the LEAD initiative, to the Mac Foundation, Cohort 13 would not have been possible without you. I would like to begin a quote from Henry Ford. Together is the beginning. Keeping together progress and working together is success. Our team, Cohort 13, consists of three elementary schools and one school. And I have the print tonight, and so I call your name if you'd stand and please... I ain't standing. I have a print. Ed Elementary, Mc Catlin. Our Elementary, Ostrowski. Ridgecrest Tree, Ora Harrell. And then Doctor, and then Lawton School, Doctor with Deloach, and she had to... But I just would give them a special recognition of their hard work. Appreciate it.[779.00][779.00](applause) Cohort 13 began summer by attending an extensive A-training at University of Virginia, which focused on four arching themes: leadership, structural infrastructure, school climate, and talent management. From these, each school principal was trained to yield team players and to develop a plan of improvement in three common needs known as three big rocks. Cohort 13 identified rocks as data collaboration, observation and feedback, and school climate. As a shepherd for Cohort 13, it is mine to empower leaders finding support ability. I just through conducting full weekly visits, promoting data practices, facilitating month meetings, and engaging district leaders, guiding search for teachers, of teachers, entering the progress, any day plan, a specific data. Where are we currently? The first rock, data-based variation. Each school established a weekly collaboration times. They developed a principle, data-driven, uh, and they've implemented weekly sixth-grade or sub-level collaboration using specific checklists designed for effective instruction. Collaboration is designed to promote data destruction by analyzing specific data. At this time, schools have evaluated test scores, have analyzed STARS, which is an indicator of academic growth, and are currently working on fine-tuning the, the weekly con assessment of the Alpha Plus Enormity Assessment. On October 14th, schools met with their school team, team number eight, and assessed the first of the Enormity Assessment results, wrote a teacher action plan, which should as a vehicle to drive class action. Second big rock, innovation and feedback. Where are we? Schools, along with district leaders, were half-day and feedback training in September. Lead, as shepherds. In the training, we use University of Virginia Co-Continuum to target specific areas for teacher growth. After the training, principals have weekly scheduled to observe and provide our verbal feedback. Currently complete multiple observations, meaningful feedback, advising coaching continuum. This alone has served a significant teacher growth. The third is school climate. This has been documenting surveys at the beginning of the year, getting at the data from the surveys, and focus areas of need: attendance, graduation rate, and customer service, all key areas of focus in school climate. Over the last three months, Cohort 13 has come together as a team, blending energy, our knowledge, and professional skill. We're committed to working together, team, for the success of all at LP.[963.75][963.75](applause)
I want to say how proud I am Cohort 13. Compared where Cohort 12 was last year, compared to where they're, um, great game, miles ahead under that grid, it's gonna be fun to watch our success. I'm also amazed the progress that Cohort 12 has made in the, Carol said, the data, data mission meetings, the weekly walkthroughs, principals observing and giving feedback to teachers. We're a level higher. Uh, it's, it's, we had teachers who were a little bit resistant to ration meetings, and they were scheduled for 60 minutes. Cohort 12 has gone up to 90 minutes of collaboration, and they're complaining that it's not enough, and they want to meet more. Just been able to watch that, that evolve, and that. Um, some of the evidence is that now we're seeing us just being the full leaders of the, teachers are starting to take on those lead roles and principal facilitator. Uh, the teachers have said it's no longer a competition. I'm better than the teacher down the hall. If they have it, I have, or their scores are better than mine, I need to learn how. Those walls have been taken down, and it's a learning community with the schools. They're expecting the principal to be in their classroom, and if they're not there, they're asking the principal, what's wrong? Why aren't they? Um, our teachers know, see one, and if it's not quality, they're demanding quality. Getting smarter than we have ever been as far as assessment. And our secondary schools are beginning to find time. It wasn't a hard thing for elementary schools. They have the showers, they can find time at lunch or after recess. But when you only have that group of students for 55 minutes a day, how do you find time for reteaching? Schools are really starting to think outside the box and find ways to what has not been mastered. Important things that we're noticing are the experience. The teachers and the principals are the learning, and you don't hear all the excuses. I want to celebrate our report card grades. We've visited with this before all of our schools made, as far as our state report card, the elementary school is where it gets gained. I want to start by celebrating last year's report card grade was, grades was minus. This year, it's a D, and Hugh Bish went from an F. Phenomenal. And, well, Blake is here. When, if you visit with Blake Thomas and listen to the passion of his students and his teachers, and how he's about them, and so I want to give him the opportunity. Central Middle School and what they accomplished.
Thanks, girl. I don't want to take up too much time, but she talked to us, and so I've been bugging Brenda and everybody else. I say, can I talk report cards? So this gives me a chance to kind of talk about cards and some things that has been amazing. And Hugh for letting me take this time to do that. And that the same thing, Hugh Bish, F to a B, and part of that cohort as well, D minus. I mean, that's just amazing, and, uh, that's really, really awesome, that report card. Um, a card, it is awesome, but there are some, Joey Hoffmeister, our state student, she's saying that, working on how they can make that more accurate, the school does. And, uh, you know, glad that Carol said that. We also focus on the culture. Um, look at the Facebook from any Lawton Pope's schools. Living Week and Character Ed, I mean, Eisner's doing something high. We just saw McKenzie up here from Lawton. We just do some awesome things, not just amazing things culturally, too. I think that are helping students into career-bound citizens, and I've been doing that. And, uh, for example, today at Central, we had a mock election. In all last, uh, our social studies classes, they broke down, researched all the state questions. They researched, you know, like, who do you side with? And some of the kids were really like, vote for him or her. But I didn't think I'd vote to do that. But we spent a whole week just talking about all that stuff, and that's not a test. But they did a mock election today. We're gonna give the results tomorrow and see how the compares with the... Our kids are real excited about that. I give you a copy, there's a colored copy, and a copy of our report card from one year to the next. And I do want to say, like, the Lawton Constitution, they had mentioned that, uh, Central Middle School and only D schools, and that there needs to be, have a remediation plan for those two. Happy to say that you guys have done that. You, they've been, a meeting we had last year about UVA and adding at Lawton High, and after we did that, you guys said yes. And so you guys are doing that right now. You've placed some remediation to help schools like Central better. But, uh, the first page, it basically showed a color-coded one, and, uh, basically, uh, the first part is student, it's reading, math, science, and social studies. And what I assessed years, the 2015 results, a 16. And if it, it was a growth, if it stayed the same, it was in white, and it was in red. So the only one that we made winter studies, we went down from 60 to 56. This is what I'm most proud of. Overall, student growth, it takes, their results from 2015, 2016 to see if they grow. They grew. In reading, we grew in both areas, and then the growth, it takes the bottom 25 percent students' test scores and to see how their scores compared to teams in 2016. And there, we made, look at reading, we went from 37 to 54. Huge jump. Now, and I'm not trying to, Central compared to other schools, but I'm gonna say schools for a second.[1252.75][1252.75](laughter) If you look, Central has all greens, one white, one red. Look at the others, middle schools, who they do a phenomenal, they really do. I'm not trying, like I said, reds on them, uh, but we do have grades. And let me tell you why that is. What, uh, you get six bonus points for attendance. Uh, we have a principal second semester, that, uh, principals work with students, we call parents, mornings, and things like that. And we had a principal that had to take medical leave second semester, and so it did drop. 94 percent is what you have, six bonus points. We had 93.2. Point three, we'd have had six bonus points. So actually, 69 D-plus to a 73. So I'm telling everybody, I know, but we're pretty C.[1295.52][1295.52](laughter) Now, that is part, and we know that. And so we've already done some projects for the attendance clerk, the Title I funds. Uh, we're doing some incentives, pizza parties, and, um, we approve the modified dress. So I've talked to the kids about this, and I said, our class has the best percentage of attendance. It's a pizza party. And I said, well, the next semester, the class attendance rate is gonna get a free dress day.[1316.87][1316.87](laughter) So I'm hoping that this is a part of it. Uh, the LEAD instrumental in doing this. Um, the principal last year, and that just helped me traditionally help, and I appreciate you guys doing that. So proud, and that's why I came out, I've been asking. It's a D-plus, but if you actually look at all of it, we really could have been a, a C, 73. So we're still gonna get better and better every year. Appreciate you guys saying yes to letting us do that. I just want to say too, I mean, our students, our parents, our cooks, our custodians, every single person over there, they work so hard, and that's why I came over, this is what the good things at Central and LEAD, and everybody's doing. It's just an amazing job that all is doing. So, and you guys, I mean, you're instrumental in doing so. Thank you guys very much.[1358.87][1358.87](applause)
I can ask you every time, how is LEAD helping the other district? Are we leaving other schools out? And just the structures and the systems that we're learning through this program, those are the focus of our principal meetings, all, that's the focus of our learning instruction, uh, monthly meetings with us. It's even what we talk to our rookies about, and our rookie club. Everyone is getting the benefit of this. If you notice, at the elementary level, there was no D's or F's. Schools are at ABC level, and we're, we're moving for just all As and Bs. Um, as, we have a fall visit from the, uh, University of Virginia, and in, there's a stapled yellow piece of paper on the top, and in there, I, we report at, for the district level, things that they're celebrating and suggestions of next, um... Next Sunday, we'll attend the Shepherd Summit in Dallas, and we'll have tuning. And then in January, there'll be six districts, 14 principals, and 23 teachers from Albuquerque for our mid-year conference. For times, uh, back-to-back, the, we'll be listening to, or receiving leadership. We are getting ready to enter our sustainability, and so we need to work on our leadership. And then we'll be listening to Paul Bambrick and doing data instruction training on that. Now, I'm anxious for you to watch your video. More anxious for you. In order for all of this to make, you've gotta come see it. And so that of your packet is my calendar for November. I'm there, it tells you which schools I'll be at, what I'll be looking for. I would love and say, Brenda, I'm going to join you today at Pat Henry, you next week at, at MacArthur, because when you're in it, happens, that's when this will all make sense to you in life. So hopefully, I'll hear from you. If not, I might be, but, but come and see what's going on. It's amazing. Thank you for the opportunity for our district to participate. It's been the best thing we've ever done. Thanks.
On that...
Sure, I'm there for two and a half to three hours each time. You can come and go and do what I have on there, the timeframe, so I know that if you need that certain part, you can adjust what we're doing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for that.
One of the things I feel very important that I need to, is that, first of all, I have two things. Dr. Regina Deloach is here, so I would like to recognize her with Lawton High. And then I would also like to recognize Carol. She, she, her grade was from an F to a B minus, and I think recognition.[1495.87][1495.87](applause)
Thank you all very much. And you are free to go. Are you free to hang out, dude? And just to point out, while they're leaving, well, out of eight tests, seven of them increased. Um, and so, uh, I'm not a huge measure, so. Okay, our report?
Um, here I am, Superintendent's Report. I have discussion and possible action regarding the OSBAE meeting programs. Uh, we're both sure in front of you, and I, I know I've given the board, um, individually some updates. And Mr. Sherram, as Board President, join me on this. Um, we have a follow-up meeting to see if there are any final thoughts or found concern. What this will simply do is, um, with the program, it will, um, essentially create a digital board meeting format. Um, everything will be available immediately for the public, um, as soon as it's posted and it's official. Um, board members would, and we would work through the, um, the, on a device, um, would be electronic. What we would think first, six months, our goal would be to use genuinely to fully implement the program. That way, we work all the key... We would have a lot of questions to answer as board members, like, do we want to receive it? Do we want to use a tablet here, things, figure out devices? At the end, um, the cost for the program is, sells for the first year, and $1,000 per year after that. Um, the costs alone of transport, transfers, delivering, renting, et cetera, um, the cost would, um, it would pay for itself easily after... The, I sat in on a, um, at the USA, or a meeting, Sessia Conference. Um, the schools that were there, that were, were overwhelmingly, um, and glad they won. Um, Kristy Watts, she shared with our meeting, she said, uh, the, I can't remember the exact number, six of them on the program, only one has backed out, inception, and because they, um, they had them not interested in using technology. And so, uh, like, give, opened up a question, discussion. We don't have to make a decision today. I thought maybe if, if we put it over this board meeting. Uh, highly, we do make the transition. I spoke to the staff this morning, we can make transition. Um, law a little bit changed, but I think we can do it. Uh, Mr. Sherram is there, um, would like to hear your, or any questions from the board.
So would we, would the board like to do now?
Absolutely. It would just, this paper agenda, we would have a, a computer or, or, yeah, and everything would be, uh, the mouse to move to the next agenda. I, we would still do, um, you know, everything would still be transparent. It'd be more a transparent process because immediate updated on the website, and so, all in real time.
So, but if our agenda's still gonna be, I have to have it, I want to go home.
That question is how do, how we're gonna do that. Um, I have other discussions we can have, as we do in all need, Tori, and board members, look at, um, um, devices you have available. Um, you know, we have a lot of questions that if we do jump into this, um, I don't think it's remarkable, I mean, some Zeldin is actually giving me kind of a, sort of, I'm thinking about Zeldin. Um, options from Apple to, um, to Dell, um, different options, either assign board member, take them home. Um, a member can actually use, since you log in, and it's a web cloud-based program, you can log in there and we guys here, so you wouldn't have to carry them back. Um, and you work the agenda digitally, you can text, and when you come to the board meeting, sign in, all your notes are there, questions. Um, again, the first part for us as a staff is, you know, we don't, um, we have a change process, so we're uncomfortable. Um, so as we work through it, um, we would aim to have as many as necessary. We would have a paper copy, inter-digital, we're sure we're through all the leaks and all the snags and everybody comfortable. OSBAE would come and train us for this, well. I'm really confident in, we can make the transition actually be good for the district as well.
I'm, I'm, I'm one of those people to be, I like paper. I really believe that this is the way to go.
Well, the question was, was, um, from the staff, said the paper that still has to be made out. That doesn't hear in your second meeting. First, we, that was just a lot, because nerves were crunched, and like, we're gonna say much, as opposed if we still have to have these out here and copies downstairs, and so, going back to this thing about the medical field, we said, oh, we're gonna just go digital, and it's still on file, and they've created more paper than they ever have, go quote, unquote, though. Did, what did your findings come in the second? Come away with any number on that?
Warning, we, we, um, discussed, we do have, create, right now, we archive a digital copy of all meetings. Um, once there's a finalized agenda, that there's be nothing stopping us, we, we archive that, it's creative. We would still add each board meeting, make sure the, the summary, um, but as far as if any of you ever wanted to, the, um, all the documents, the pages, the, um, to look, those would be available on... Mr. Zeldin actually even talked about, in the habit, where we have outage, where we had no board meeting, he has a, a deal, a hotspot that'll take 100 and feet devices. So we even have a bank for the board meeting in case that happens.
So if something was to fail, be a backup site that would allow us to get any information that would, that could be lost.
Um, came to that point, we were out of power, we'd have a board meeting anyways. So we're pretty committed to, that's why I say we would, we would take, our implementation plan would be to, to fully go deep. be to fully go do in, by 2017, but that, we could, we could very easily have our digital one in January. But just once we jam, the, those issues we have.
Trying to make sure the advantages, SSBA has subscription fees, getting this as a cloud-based, and they're going to have guaranteed backup of the data, which will protect us, and it's also very secure. So ultimate going ahead, keep as much paper, I'd probably be digital, hard, LSBA will have some type of digital, correct?
Yeah, here, what, what she does right now is creates a PF that we archive. What the, as Christie explained, the time we have a meeting, all of the previous board meetings, that you've been, everything's an open record anyways, and so available on that program. We decide, we go, just in case company, those sorts of things, we're still archive our own PF, the agenda. Kathy's very concerned about it, sure we have a good archived copy, no matter where the program we move it forward.
Well, I work in the hospital, and we did a lot of stuff with paper, but most of it is now put into a program, and it is kept, and we destroy all we grow. So I think the way to go.
And you know, right now, every time we deliver agenda, we have, you know, we have at least one, it's in a van, drives all over town, delivers everybody, which is three-hour process. Plus, we have the, the print costs, I gave those 24 board meetings, 22 board meetings across the year. It doesn't take long to add up, you know, as soon as we certify the board agenda, it's due and everybody has a copy.
And so we'd be able to give them as even a little quicker.
And then, right now, the way we do it, if there's a change, was a, it is a tour. This would give us the ability to update it, of course, and very rarely do we do that to the 40-hour deadline, but you know, they have a lot of hours before to do it, we have something that pops up, give us the ability to update it in real time, as well as a meeting after, like, those requirements. So I think it's a, I think it's a very, for, for this board, we have, we have a lot of internal, and I think about what kind of devices, things, we don't think they're interoperable.
Have Rob kissed any Zeldin, as far as what, what would be, a screen?
No, let's just experience, so it says.
Question for the after, Deegan?
Yeah.
And they motion, we move forward with that.
Call me please.
Dr. Bridge?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Item D, consideration action, post-vision to policy DCBB on advertising and posting vacancy regulation, and this is simply updates our policy reflective use of the fourth.
Second.
Call the rule please.
Ms. John?
Yep.
Dr. Bridge?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Item C, consideration action, propose visions to policy CF block public school student drug testing policy FMCFDSE, all student drugs can contest for, and this for recent revision to our, to our drug testing, student drug testing policy, as a adjustment for board meetings.
I want to renew into the change. Seriously.
Call the release.
Ms. Bridge?
No.
Ms. John?
No.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridge? Ms. Sherman?
Yes. Item D, consideration action, go random agreement with transit, send lats and bus pass for secondary students. And if the board members earlier in the year had a presentation where they came in, we talked about the possibility of students, 7-2-12 being tagged down a last bus, so the bus, seven, well, not 24, seven, 24-hour bus, but, but you know, as we, as we entered that, we had a budget round and built the budget possibly. I have Ryan Laners who lats here today, in, you know, this, this agreeing is, we consider a pyram for this semester element. Once we do it between now and the semester going, we would be able to judge ridership is for 7-2-12 students. Some very good advantages for us, for example, at secondary schools, we run situations where they stay late on this bus, so they're with the middle schools, and then the middle school, middle school students run the elementary schools. And what this does, all the secondary students would have an option, they run late school, they want to go to practice, they maybe want to take something on Saturday, they will always have transportation. Pass would not only help them during school week, on the weekends, in the summers, the cost we based it on, and Ryan can help on that, we kind of look, that's kind of proposed of the 7,000 school that were eligible to ride the bus, we kind of built it on about 1,000 students that didn't give hind, taking advantage of it. It's a very good reasonable starting point, over the summer, if we chose to do this, we would have an idea re-figure, and that's why we're not going to do it as a plan, we don't, this is new. Although lats, denture with other districts, other municipalities, so they have a really good idea of how, the big question, students who ride lats would be, be the lats schools, they would not be, those would not be responsible for students on the lats bus. If lats ever wanted, lats have found a reason to, just let the other rider abandon their system, that would be student lats. What this would do is create any cost liability for us, their riders are their riders, or our riders. It does open up just, I'm sorry for, if this are the positive, open wise labor in the secondaries, to students could stay labor, students that maybe anticipating sports or collect activity, who could do so because they have opportunity to ride the bus for free. I mean, it's one of the most exciting things considered, though. Any questions the board might have, and me or Mr.?
My question is, how will we, at the end of the fall period, use, how do we use the system that we, the 35,000 was a good figure?
Well, we actually started that beginning of the semester at the start, and we actually singled out, you know, how many students who rode that particular bus, and we kept it that for, since the wrong, and so we'll just continue with that.
How do you document that? I mean, do you use the bus driver after? He has to make a count and make a way every day of how many? Okay.
So they've got a way to scanning badges, or?
No, no, it's kind of.
So, so at the end of the period, what I can refigure that, you know, those figures for us to look through and?
Absolutely. I mean, we'll have to figure these.
The pilot's going to be open, who all is eligible for this?
I believe it's for the sixth.
It's a simple, yes. All secondary students.
Everyone would have this badge?
And they have to have the badge, of mine, to get off.
I think that's the best thing, if we're going to do this, to indicate that, my fear is you have a brother, you know, sibling that's going to run Saturday, and little brother doesn't have, and then all he tells them, no, and one can and one, so I just, I know that's the reality of it, but as long as we take that, I think.
Yeah, right now, we talk about that, that we're concerned about, but I think, once we start the program, we'll kind of develop type of, you know, pass or whatever, just who wants to ride, and yeah, anything else is.
It's workable, I do it. Workation is the key, because you know, you're going to get, and then you have the bus driver, not the person that's got it, that news, or decides to let it go, and that's all. But that will all be the findings, I'm sure.
Going back to, if you don't scan the badge, how are you keeping, what's their?
Well, we have a manual counter sign.
So manual, okay.
And so we're moving into a counter.
And we talked about the need for lats at the sites, helps students underneath work the system, how it's available. Don't expect explode overnight, but we expect over the semester, students, the ridership to grow, there's no more.
So how are we getting information out? They're physically into the building?
Yes, we talked about the need to coordinate with, right.
We actually started doing that last week, when I thought we were going to set up a mail, so. Get out there, everyone will get information.
And the program is there, is transition program, the adult students, they were serving special services, we underwrite this as well, so a different program, but we've done this with way this year, historical, this, this really, I, this is one of the most exciting cities across the city, the district, to really think for this. And also, Mr. Cook and the transport department are going to investigate how this eases and less burden on our buses.
And the program is this month?
We're doing it this semester, yes.
Cost to us, how much?
Thirty-five thousand dollars worth, and I decided full semester.
Okay. We'll come back and see what we want to, do anything else. But what, what's the threshold, keep the right, I mean, up to?
I, also, we actually get the numbers, I think I'll get it, if you can figure that right now, is, we get L2s that ride, but I think once, I mean, it's a free service, and maybe when Evans is gone, that better, you know, what, how to kind of.
We'll, we double the thousand into our budget this year. We have the money budget to do this. The cost of a student pass?
Right now, it's thirty.
So for each student, for a year, that's will be dollars, figure that, you know, you figure, you know, you extrapolate that out with 7,000 students. It's a good start, but yeah, it gives us both an opportunity to whether or not this will be, I think we'll know by the end of semester how it's going to be. I'm just excited about it.
My approval. Just a minute, semester talking, the spring?
We're talking, we're talking January.
Talking, yeah, spring, okay.
It's not really a cake. I want to send borrow your name parts, because we do have the rest of the semester.
Good question.
We use the rest of the semester to word out, everybody else, I mean, starting at this, that'll be six weeks.
Second.
Please.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Bridge?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. All right, I knew we had a biannual, and thank you, Ms. Landers, you're a good sir, or hang out with.
Oh, that's nice.
We have a biannual oversight committee, which the, Bonde Oversight Committee met today. I gave us a clean bill of health, they checked our purchases, and planned purchases, and then the scope, and all the voters, what for, but what the community communicated, be used for. They did have things that they asked, they wanted to find out about Amazon smile programs on that comp. They wanted the list of, they wanted, we include this to the acceptable, from the state, and they're going to take away my title, I've got number images in the packet, so they numbers on the, so I think I can get those done. Very complimentary of the, and the, the board has established, this is just a set of eyes to communicate with it, but, actually, they're very happy, they believe we're on track. And we essentially kind of thought what we're going to do, and we get back and we talk about, this is what we've done. They have an opportunity, if there's any communication, the opportunity to, we have a new co-chair, and that is Mr. Charles Wood, he'll do two years, and then Mr. Ed Peterson will do one more year, and so here we'll elect one of the two co-chairs. I might think of, I didn't have any questions? Okay. Item S, have a couple of quick announcements, and I want to remind you, vote tomorrow. I'll be for your sticker, since you voted. We have a few things to announce from students, we have, Gateway Academy has been working with, some other entities do professionals training, they call it show money, and I want Mr. Millian, our staff, Chamber of Commerce, been in the management group, I'm excited to, the more, the employability and professional development skills. I think we have three board members, and they lived the lead on Friday, I think that was a very big success, I think the community, the McMahon Foundation, are helping that, which we had more haters and stream than any of us, we had 95, we had 75 or 70 students, and then about 25 staff members. LPS will represent it. I just want to make a note that within our personnel, we have come up with a temporary decision for our journey salary schedule, we worked some more on that, as we press our extra duty, but that's in our personnel. Can we, um, press my announcement?
We'll put to that, won't we?
Any questions?
Later, for the journeyman. Right. My approval.
Does anybody, any from the council agenda?
No.
I'm page 30, there's a purchase order for Noel McAnville, I'd like to remove it.
What, number, 30?
Page 38, Noel McAnville, $50, I'd like to remove it.
That being, anybody else need anything moved from the council agenda?
No.
Laura Ten Ocean?
May I have your approval, council agenda?
I was going to question, are we removing that?
I, just in further, before I put, you have a, that blanket standing purchase order, there's something we need it in place at the moment, we can, any?
So we're moving off everything?
No, $50,000 purchase for Noel McAnville.
I'll come and leave a thousand for the electrical.
For the electric? Let me go back to page 30. Those in the center, I'll have a single. Good catch, we removed them, somewhere in my electrical, I know.
All right, from the rosin table, removed, as anybody else needs, removed from your council agenda.
My approval, minus the Noel McCann that says electric. A second.
Please.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes. Do I have an executive session tonight? Then I, your personnel report, 13, I vote to approve employing, promoting discipline of individual certified support, sort of, person, this number 33 through 136.
My approval.
Second, please.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Is there any new business?
None.
Do I get the board meeting date is scheduled for Thursday, 17th, to the end here at Shoemaker?
When? Thursday, November 7.
November 17?
Thursday.
I will not be here that evening.
I will not be here that evening.
I'll be down, actually.
Okay. Even more, as of right now.
No, stop.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. You guys, if not, we respect you, so, that's all for you. All right, consideration action concerning our board dates at this time. announcements?
Yes. Encourage the board to attend the Pillow Palooza, that's part of the local school foundation board, or foundation. If you guys haven't been to it, really, because you get to hear what the teachers do, what their, and this is a fundraising PS that we wouldn't be able to things in our, in our schools if we didn't have their board. It is next Monday night, it's at the seating at Cameron at 5:30.
Boy, can tell us to be performing, too.
Oh, good, good.
Who are the events? Construction to July 7.
Second.
Please.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter? Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Seven.
I recommend the, the.